Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrolcabeltv.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, August 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 24th at 9:00 a.m. The City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. I'd also like to point out we have Tina Hubert here subbing in for Donna Suddles. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any agenda approvals, additions, and/or deletions? Ismer Farmer would like to pull J.3 and J.4. Any other additions? I know you're going to go through something. Okay. And we have presentations. The Planning Commission Annual Report to City Council.
Good evening, Mayor. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. Keith Jones, the Planning Commission Chair, will provide the annual report to council.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you guys hear me? Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Keith Jones and I am the Chair of the Galt Planning Commission. It is my pleasure to present the council with the Planning Commission Annual Report for the fiscal year 2018 and 2019. This report outlines the commission's responsibilities and activities. The Planning Commission plays a vital role in ensuring the continued growth and success of the city of Galt by taking action on a variety of development applications and guaranteeing that the integrity of the city's general plan is maintained and the city's ordinance are complied with. The Planning Commission makes decisions and entitlements such as subdivision maps, design review, use permits, and variances. The commission will also make recommendations to the city council on amendments to the general plan and the development code. The Planning Commission worked on a number of high-profile projects this year, including the 226-unit Greenwood Cottage subdivision, the Gertbits 6-unit infill townhome project, the Dry Creek Oaks Senior Development Project, and the Cardozo 1 subdivision. We also approved two tentative subdivision map extensions, one for the Faraway Oaks project and one for the Cedar Flats Estates. In addition, the Planning Commission made recommendations to the city council on an ordinance allowing billboard signs, as well as a general plan amendment and rezoning, allowing the rehab of the historic structure at 320 Fifth Street. The Planning Commission also approved the annual CIP General Plan Conformance Check and recommended approval of the annual General Plan and Housing Elements Progress Report. We at the Planning Commission appreciate the opportunity to work with staff and dive into the development projects, as well as the general plan and ordinance amendments. The Planning Commission does not hesitate to roll up its sleeves and get into the work in order to help make projects work for Galt. I'd also like to thank my fellow and current commissioners for their efforts, Vice Chair Mark Cruz, Leanne McFadden, Kevin Papinou, and Matthew Pratton. I'd also like to thank the planning commissioners that served into 2018, Sherri Daly, Craig Morris, and Councilman Paul Sandu. I'd also like to, a special thank you to the Planning Department, Chris and his staff of Kristin, Stacy, and also Bill Forrest for attending all our meetings and putting all the work together. Without you guys, there wouldn't be a Planning Commission, and you do all the hard work. So, we appreciate it and thank you. That concludes the Planning Commission's report to council. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve the community and provide this report. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. You guys, any more questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for doing all the legwork that you do, you know, before things come to us. I do have a question, though. I don't know if you've noticed, but one of the things proposed on our budget options, many options, was to eliminate the Planning Commission. Just want to know if you had any remarks on that.
I do. You want me to fill out a speaker request?
You're fine.
I think it would be detrimental to the city. I think, I spoke with Chris. He let me know about it and the associated costs. I'd like to review some of those costs because I don't know if some of those costs would be regardless. Chris has timed, staff timed, the roommate reports to council, so I don't know if the full boat is 100% that value. I do believe there's also a cost of the Planning Commission, there's the attorneys that show up. So, there is a cost, but the benefit outweighs that cost to the city. I think, right now, we have a great Planning Commission with a variety of background that provides in-depth thought to what we're doing and to help our community grow in ways, a successful way. So, you know, if you eliminate a Planning Commission, and now that's going to put all that on Chris, which he's very capable of doing, but now you take the public element out of having some say on where we want to go, and they're either going to come to us or they're just going to come in front of you. So, we're still going to have to do some of the work. So, I don't think, I think eliminating it is not a good idea for the city and where we need to go because we're at a point in the city where we have to decide, moving forward, where we're going to go. I mean, we're in desperate need of revenues, so we need development, and without that development, we're not going to get the industrial that's going to provide the tax base that we need. So, if we're not okay, if we don't grow, then self-tax.
All right. Thanks for your input, Keith.
Right. See ya.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. Next up, we have the Beautification Committee Annual Report.
Barbara Payne, the Chair for the Beautification Committee, will provide this report.
Looks like we have some members that came with you.
Absolutely. Good evening, council members. The Galt City Council, or the Galt Beautification Committee, has had a very busy year. We selected our theme to be "Keep Galt Looking Good." We believe the most important way to have a beautiful community is to keep it clean and litter-free. That is a basic but important way to show a community has pride by showing that it has pride in the way it looks. The five of us have asked citizens to come out and make the gateway to Galt, which we think is C Street and A Street, always looking clean. We've invited volunteers to come and help us pick up the litter along the streets, and they have come out with their children, with their teenagers, and made the city of Galt look really nice and clean. In addition to rolling up our sleeves to make our town look good, the committee members have planted roses at the Lake Canyon Park to highlight the Monument sign. We also planted some color plants and filled in some of the bare spots on the medians on Carillion Island. Carillion Island. Carillion Street. We have tried to inspire businesses to help by awarding a Beautiful Business of the Month Award. Some of the businesses that have been recognized are BMD, It's a Grind!, and the Coffee Shop Bakery. We have activated the Adopt a Street program with the continued help of Public Works. Mike's Miracle Foundation is the most recent addition to our Adopt a Street program, and they've adopted F Street, especially paying attention to the area where Officer Ton was We have also established the Marion O. Lawrence Memorial Rose Garden, which is nearly completed with bronze plaques to memorialize some of the citizens. Here's a sample of what it looks like. And, in fact, one of the plaques that will be installed is in memory of the librarian that was murdered in the North Sacramento County area. Want to say a special thank you to one of our citizens who's not even a member of the Beautification Committee. Her name is Joya Parish. She has been out there taking care of the roses and has really been inspired by this Memorial Rose Garden because she was such good friends with Marion O. Lawrence. We feel the community is getting the message that we want to keep our town looking good. We have had some of the churches, some of the businesses, like Starbucks, ask, call and ask if they can come and clean up a street, clean up a park. Most recently, we cleaned up the creek, or a church cleaned up the creek at Community Liberty Ranch High School, they're asking to bring two or three busloads of students to clean up wherever is needed in our city. So, we feel that there is a good attitude in this community, so we're going to celebrate. We're going to celebrate Earth Day 2020, which will be next year on April the 18th, and we want to highlight some of the things that we need to be doing to make our earth clean and beautiful, but also some of the things that are already being done by the businesses and the dairies and the vineyards to show that, you know what, with all this working together, we can make a difference. We be little, but we are powerful. So, we think we can make a difference. And I'd like to introduce some of our other members. Amy Sandhu. Paul, have you met this young lady?
Yes.
And Gail Weber.
Thirty-five years ago.
Do you have any questions for me?
Not so much a question, but a, so, I think what you guys are doing, well, I've always thought what you guys do is important. That's why I, you know, have been a participant with you guys back when, you know, I wasn't really a member either, but I was always trying to be active in the beautification.
You were actually pushing us out there?
Yeah. So, and hopefully, my appointee, Gail Weber, is doing her job that I assumed she would do on the committee, but I think she is. But, you know, I think, right now, the beautification is so much more important than ever because of, obviously because of, you know, budget cutbacks and things we've done right now with, you know, our parks not looking as best they can. And so, I think it's important that the beautification maybe, you know, discuss that more and maybe kind of step up to the next level, even if you can, and try to really get people out there to maybe participate even beyond what you guys are doing so far. And I, of course, will always be willing to help in any way I can to maybe, you know, inspire others to be involved and keep our town looking good because, obviously, right now, it's going to be more important than ever. So, just want to say that, and thank you for all you guys have done so far.
Do y'all have anything you want to say?
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just, I would also like to thank you. You're one of my favorite committees, and I've gone out there and picked up garbage with yous.
Yes, you have.
Kind of surprising. We need to teach our children not to litter, and you guys have just made such a difference.
Thank you.
And more people are getting involved, and I believe, did you go out after National Night Out?
Yes, we did. We cleaned up both parks the day after National Night Out. But I want to say about that, I had been there at National Night Out, and I had gotten a hold of the microphone and asked people to please either pick up their own litter or come back the next morning and help us. When I got to Meadowview Park, we couldn't even find a bottle cap. Every, all the litter was picked up and bagged, and Parks and Recs picked it up, and we went to Community Park, and we had some volunteers, and we cleaned up there, too. Also, I got to mention the Police Department. There are some of the areas that it's not really safe for families to bring their children to pick up litter, so the Police Department takes the work crew and takes care of those areas for us. So, we're all working together to keep Galt looking good.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? All right. Public comment. Would you like to make a statement?
Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Thank you. First up, we have Jean Davenport. She wants to talk about the budget.
I live in the city of Galt. I just want to start by thanking Barbara for being a part of this community. She threw her work on the City Council, whether we agreed or not, always respectful, and the things that she continues to do since she's left public office. She's a true gem to this city, and I want to thank her for her efforts. Thank you. I want to talk about a couple of things, like on the, we're going forward with the cutbacks on the city maintenance for the water and the things and the way that was handled. I just think it's too much at the beginning to cut it as much as you guys have. You should put it on a rotating basis of cutting the lawn every three weeks rather than the four because it'll keep it down and make sure all the valves are working. The greening is coming back, but there are dead plants that aren't going to come back. There's some on Carillion right now that just will not come back, regardless of what you say or think. So, you should remove them because the public sees that, and they're going to blame the drought. Well, one of the plants was dead before you guys made the cutback. It just wasn't removed, but it's ugly. So, you have to do things like that, and I think you should up the water instead of 50%. Take it up to 65 at least because I just think, I understand where we're at financially, but I think you're going about it the wrong way in the sense that you're making the cut so drastic to the public in the perception, anyway. I just think you could do a better job with that. That being said, with the budget, I see, you know, you talk about wanting to eliminate a complete, you know, the Planning Commission. I think that's disingenuous to the taxpayer, period. If you haven't talked about eliminating any departments or consolidating some departments to save money that way, you just talk about taking away from the taxpayer base. That's just wrong. I mean, you want people to get mad, go along those lines and bring it up, you know, in a public meeting like this. That's the first I've heard of it. So, I think you're going about some of the stuff the wrong way. You know, regardless if we're in a deficit or not, you shouldn't just take away and expect us not to get angry or react. That being said, along the lines of, I've talked to a couple of you about a cannabis business coming to town, and the response I got was this city would not okay that. And I just think that's also disingenuous because if you talk to your constituents that you're close with, you might get 85% of them to say that they're not in favor. But you don't go outside of that group to talk about other people in this city what they want. What if you found out that there was a local businessperson right now that wanted to open up a cannabis operation? They've been in this city for 25 years. How would you react to that? The bottom line is, you're making cuts to us. You're making us do things that, you know, that we're going to have to put up with because of a deficit of, not our doing, but the fact of the matter is, we're the ones, it's going to suffer the consequences from it. So, I understand that probably every one of you on the dais, or maybe 80% of you or 60% of you, aren't in favor of a cannabis business, but that doesn't, that's your opinion, and that's great. But you have to get outside of that and talk to the taxpayers and see what it is. I'm not offended by it. I don't care. I don't drink. I don't smoke. I don't do any of that. But the bottom line is, if that's going to help us solidify our deficit, I want to do it. And if we have a local businessperson that's interested in opening up in this city and being a part of the community in that sense, I am for it because we, you know, you guys get to write the rules on this. They can't just come in and do what they want. You guys are going to write the rules on it. And if you're looking at a tax increase or a base that's going to really help us get out of the deficit, it's disingenuous for you not to consider that. At least talk about it publicly. Why or why not? Because the bottom line is, you guys really aren't saying things until the last minute, and then we're getting in here and we're going to have to react to it after the fact, like we always do. And it's just not right. You need to involve us a little bit more, and I just think you guys need to take the time to talk to the citizenry and see if anybody's in favor of maybe opening that up because I know there is a businessperson in this city that would like to start a dispensary. They have the wherewithal to do it. They have the permits to do it. They have the money to do it, and that's a large tax base. I think you can talk to the city manager about that, and I think there's some money involved in that. I think it would be disingenuous for us not to approach it, at least, and get it out in the public domain. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Next up, we have Jen Brandon with Cardinal Glass on waste fee increases.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for taking the time to listen. The last time I had the chance to speak with you, I shared with you some ideas about unintended consequences of political decisions, and this evening, I want to share with you some thoughts about good intentions. We had a lady stand here the last time I visited the chambers, and she shared with you all the good things we need to know about methane gas and what happens if you stick more and more green things in the landfill and how bad methane gas is. And I got to thinking, who's the more dangerous person in this room? The fellow with the pistol on his hip or the lady standing over here? It troubled me a lot. Good intentions, recycling. I love it. We do it all the time. It's still going to cost me $45,000 more to pay my trash bill at Cardinal this year than it did last year, and we're going to make some adjustments in the way we do things, and we're going to learn how to compact some trash that we didn't have before with a larger compactor, but I'm going to have to pay for that. So, the bottom line is, there's probably at least one to one and a half full-time equivalent employees that I will not be hiring, and that's a challenge. In some ways, though, recycling is an odd kind of thing because we want to keep green waste out of the landfill. We don't want to make more methane. We don't want to melt the polar ice caps. We don't want to drown the people in LA. I get that. That's a good idea, but it may not be practical, and it may be based on bad science. But we ought to recycle the things that are practical, that are economically viable, that are reusable, that they can be repurposed or made feedstocks to other things. I don't know about bringing a cannabis operation to town, but it might be practical to think about what builds a good tax base and a diverse community where people want to come to live here. This could be just a bedroom community of Elk Grove or Sacramento, or the folks who've got money from the Bay Area, but that doesn't mean it's a great place to live and play and raise your children. It's not also a place where you can work, ply your trade, ply craft, and make and develop a home for yourself and your family. We've got a lot of things that we could do in this little town to make it the great American little city that it's supposed to be, and I like it. I think it has great potential. So, since the Chinese aren't going to take our plastic anymore, and we can grind up plastic into small fiber, and we can use that as a feedstock into asphalt and other such construction projects, I don't see why something of that kind of research realm couldn't be undertaken as a task force to go find out what else can be done with the products that we're going to recycle because that stuff's going somewhere. Right now, it's piling up in places, and I don't know who's processing plastic, but somebody is, and it could be done here. There are lots of things that make a great place to live. What worries me is that Galt could easily become a bedroom community where you can live and live poorly, but you can't make a living here. I can't get people to come work here because it's too hard to do, and when they see little restaurants that close and little shops that close and other barber shops that close and businesses that close because they can't afford the trash bill, you lose something very vital to making it a nice place to live. Then you've got to go to Elk Grove, or you've got to go to, say, Lowdy or Stockton or Sacramento to do your shopping, and that's where you spend your money. So, that's where that $5, $6, $7 turnover happens, but it doesn't happen here, and you want it to happen here. So, this is an opportunity for you to understand that while recycling is a great idea, and I'm all for it, and I'm in favor of it, and I do it all the time. We have the largest recycling can you can get from the city, and it's twice the size of my trash can at the house, and it's always full, plastic, cardboard, all the paper and wrappings that come with the things you buy, which is another problem all unto itself. We have a really tiny trash can, so we don't have a lot of trash. We've got a huge recycle. So, if that's what we're going to do, somewhere in that pile of plastic, somewhere in that pile of garbage that we call recyclable material, is a goldmine that hasn't been tapped, and I would encourage you to consider it. In the meantime, anything you can do to take a look at how we spread the cost of these new burdens put on us by the state in a fair fashion amongst all the citizens and relieve the businesses of the unfair burden that they've been tasked with in the last six months would be something that you should do. People, for the most part, don't have a lot of options, but businesses do, and they vote in a different kind of way. They come, or they go, or they sell their assets, and they pull up roots and go someplace else where the business climate is more favorable to the businesses that will bring employees and citizens to the city that they want to live in. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Next up, we have Rochelle Herrendine, representing the chamber, and wants to talk on trash.
My name is Rochelle Herrendine, and I'm here representing the Galt Chamber and all of our small businesses here in town, including myself. I am a small business owner, and I just want to make sure that we're keeping in front of you how important it is to all of the small businesses here in town that you are continuing to work on coming to a resolution or something to make this problem better for all of us. As a small business owner, I have clients, customers, community members constantly coming into my office. Just in August, I believe, I have four sports teams in addition to other individuals who are approaching me for memberships and as a small business owner, or for sponsorships. And as a small business owner, a lot of us really like to be able to provide these sports teams and our youth and communities money so they could continue to play sports and do all these things that they want to do. As a small business owner, we're constantly looking at expenses, and as prices increase, it takes away from things that we can do for our community. So, unfortunately, when we have rising trash bills that are going up 400, 500, 600%, it's not feasible for us as a small business owner to continue to sponsor our local youth teams, FFA, 4H, and that's something that I think is a big deal for our community. We talk about a great American little town, and that's part of it. So, not being able to do that as a small business owner, it's very disappointing to us. We just got notification from Kat. She's the owner of Mirror Mirror Salon. It's a little salon right next to Los Aslethas in that strip mall, and unfortunately, effective October the 1st, she will be closing her doors. Due to the trash increases in that shopping center, her landlord had to raise her rent, and in addition, because it's attached to a restaurant, all of the other small businesses are now responsible for getting their own trash bins. So, because of the raised rent and having to now purchase a trash bin, unfortunately, Mirror Mirror cannot keep their doors open. So, from what we know of, this is the first small business that's now going out of business because of the trash increases. So, I urge you to get creative, work with us, and there's a lot of community members that would like to be here, and we encourage them to speak, too, but I'm just one on behalf of a couple of small businesses. So, I thought you guys should know that as what he said, decisions have unintended consequences, that I don't believe this is going to be the only business that's going out because of this. So, I thank you for your time and everything that you can do to help make this better for us. I believe small businesses, and any business in Galt, is a big deal for us to continue to have tax revenue coming in. I know everybody talks about the deficit and wanting to bring more businesses into town, but it's also equally as important to retain all of the businesses that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herrendine. Next up, we have Bonnie Rodriguez, representing the Galt Chamber, talking on trash also.
Unfortunately, I think that's what I'm getting known for is trash talk. I go to cover other stories in other areas, and those are the first questions that they ask me, so what's going on now with the trash? I wanted to start off today on a little bit of a positive note by thanking Michael Selling for going on some tours of some businesses. I don't know that the council members were aware of it. Cal Recycle, so the state, I don't know who approached you, but we all came to an agreement, and the three, Jill Firth from Cal Recycle, and Michael Selling, and myself, visited a handful of businesses in town. I think there was a little bit of an eye-opener for everybody involved, even the people visited. I think there was a little bit of an eye-opener for everybody involved, even the people visited. I was even surprised, some of these businesses, I had not been behind their counters, so to speak. So I learned a lot about the different businesses. But what I learned, and so the positive was, thank you for doing that. But I'm going to go quickly into the negative. What I learned, the message that I carried away with that was that, and I'm already on the blacklist, that Cal Waste has failed. They were supposed to, according to the contract, and according to the agreement, they were supposed to have discussions with these businesses. And there was not one business, correct me if I'm wrong, that had a good discussion with Cal Waste to gain any understanding. In one circumstance, Cal Waste came in and asked an employee, because the owners weren't there, to sign the contract. And we heard similar situations where they just came in and said, here's your new rates. There was no discussion, there was no, I can't remember what you call it, the waste audits, there was none of that. The things that they stood up here and promised, they promised you, and they promised all of those businesses, that did not happen. Maybe it happened here and there with a couple of businesses, so I'm not going to say it never happened. But at least the handful that we just visited, and others that I had spoken to before, it did not happen. You know, my mind is in so many different directions, because a lot has gone on, listening to Mr. Jones, I think he left, but he made a comment about industrial users, and I think everyone needs to hear this. We need industrial users. But what I have found out from one of our realtors, and the city manager and the city attorney's office is aware of this, because we all found out at the same time, that we had an industrial, a light industrial user, ready to come in and sign and purchase property out in the industrial area and build. They would have brought around 100 jobs, they would have brought in a sales tax revenue of some sort, they would have come and eaten at our restaurants, shopped at our stores, they were about ready to sign, looked into the garbage, and said, no. 100 jobs. That's what this contract is doing. So I'm going to go back to where I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated because we're turning away businesses with this contract to save and to not make mad one business. We're turning away jobs, we're losing jobs, we're losing businesses to save face with one business in town. And don't get me wrong, Cal Waste has given back to this community hundredfold, probably. But this right here, all those goods, good, does not take away this bad that is affecting this business climate. Really quick, sorry. The other thing that came out in this visit that we had, it dawned on me that because of our ordinances, and because of what business owners are resorting to, having to resort to for their financial well-being, is they are being made criminals because of our ordinances. They are being made criminals. I want you to think about this. They're not, we're not even asking, you know, for marijuana use, or to be able to sell any of that, which is a hot topic. These are businesses who are trying to stay alive in GALT, and what makes them a criminal is that they are choosing to self-haul their own garbage in order to stay in business, in order to keep here in GALT. And your ordinances and that contract make them criminals. They're contracting out, they're looking for other people, the third parties, and that makes them a criminal. Because who enforces that ordinance about having to have trash in a Cal Waste? The police chief. So I ask you, Lieutenant Kalinowski, for I am waiting for that press release, when the first arrest happens, because that will be blasted all over. That's what your ordinance says, that's what your contract is creating.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Okay. Reports by city council, members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Nothing.
Councilmember Sandu.
I attended a balloon festival on August 10 and 11 both day. It was a great community event, and it was organized by the GALT chamber. And I really thank you for the GALT chamber, as you know, they bring in this kind of, they organize, they spend their time to organize this kind of events. Because this kind of event, you just don't go over there to see the event, you talking to the other people. Sometimes the citizen, they come into you, and that's what happened to me. There are a lot of citizen, when I go there, they're talking to me. They're talking to what their problem is, like a recent problem or a previous problem. And thank you again for the chamber, you know, they organize this kind of event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
Yes. This is more of an announcement. The South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan is complete. Chris reported last time, we used it on a project here in town. It's a very monumental event, and Sacramento County is hosting an acknowledgement and celebration of its completion. That'll be next Thursday, August 29, 1:30 to 2:30, at the Sac County Administration Building, right when you walk in the middle. So for those people that are interested, just to let you know. That's it.
Thank you. I attended some Business of the Months with the chamber, and some other things like that. And I have a meeting tomorrow with the Air Quality Control Board, and we had a little per capita meeting with Air Quality Control today. So that's about it. Information consent calendar. I need to get a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting of July 31, 2019, and the regular meeting of August 6, 2019, and receiving file warrants for the period ending August 7, 2019. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
No, I pulled three and four.
So move then.
Can I get a second? All right, moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Ready? Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. And next up, we have two items that are pulled. The first one is authorizing award of master task order agreements for on-call consultant services.
And I need to add.
Tina has a correction to that before we...
I would like it noted that three companies were inadvertently omitted from the posted agenda. They were Bennett Engineering Services, Inc., KSN, Inc., and Construction Testing Services, Inc. They were, however, included in the agenda report and in the resolution. Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Farmer.
So those were in the staff report, those three?
Yes.
Okay. I only pulled this item just because I wanted to, I actually did speak with Mike about this briefly, but just wanted to bring it up, just because consultants is always a hot topic with the community, and just to bring a little more transparency to what this is. So from my understanding, this is, these are companies that we frequently use for mainly public works, utility projects, things like that, that we reach out to quickly. From my understanding, a lot of times, this is situations where you don't have the time to go through the proper process. You want to just give a little background real quick?
Yeah, so essentially, what this is, is, I don't know if it's the right term, but I'm going to use it. Basically, it's our stable of consultants for various disciplines. So when small things typically come up, and a lot of times, they are time-sensitive, or just because they are small in nature, it's not worth it to go through the formal process of issuing a request for proposals on a separate, you know, activity or work order request. So it's good to have them on call, so that they can respond in a timely manner, or that just because of the, you know, the small scale of the work that's needed, though it may not necessarily be so timely, but it just allows it to be done more cost-effectively.
Okay, so with that, I have a couple of questions. So basically, what this does, and is this something we've done before? Is this just a re-upping of some arrangement that we've had?
So essentially, as I understand it, is the city typically periodically will issue a request for proposals to kind of have these on-call consultants, you know, available, because we don't have all the expertises in-house, for one thing. And sometimes, it's just a matter of resources, too. Is it maybe best to, you know, have a consultant do some work? Maybe we could do it in-house, but it may not be the best use of our in-house resources kind of thing. So essentially, that's what it, can you repeat the question again? I think I started astray from the question, though.
Basically, just that, which question?
Since 2013.
Has it been done in the past?
Oh, yeah. Has this been... Yes, so we do do it periodically, sorry. We do do it periodically. And usually, they last for about two or three years. I think this one's for three years initially. And then we have two options to renew it potentially for one additional year each. So it could be for a maximum of up to five years, so.
So it just made me kind of think of some things like, and I get, I totally, we talked about, it makes sense. I understand that there's a lot of things, especially with public works is very unique, that we learned, like with our well situations and things, we voted on a few months ago, that, you know, there's no time to go out, and I know there's a cost involved in going to RFP every time something needs to be done. And so this master agreement, where we just kind of have an understanding with these companies, I get the intent of it. But just playing devil's advocate, I also just, and I'm not so much against, I'm just putting out my thoughts out there, is, you know, we have a policy in place that says, you know, anything under $30,000 can get basically approval without going to the council. And so, and 30,000 is a significant number. Now, in the world of public works, it's probably not. I understand a lot of things can cost tremendous amounts of money. It's just the nature of the department. But with that said, you know, so on one hand, I get that costs with public works can typically be a lot more than that, and so this can be a restraint. That 30,000 number can be a restraint for your department. And on the other hand, we have policy in place that says, you know, under 30,000, you can get the green light very easily, and over 30,000. So essentially, what we're doing here is we're kind of greenlighting, you know, pretty much any expense, I guess, over 30,000, to just be at the will of city manager, can say, yeah, let's do that, and it takes it right out of the city council's hands. So I'm usually typically not...
Can I interrupt for a second? The way I understand this works is any, sorry, the way I understand that this contract works is that any contract over $30,000, any task order over 30,000, would come back to council for council's approval.
That's correct.
There's no authority at staff level or city manager's office to do anything over $30,000.
Okay. Well, it doesn't say that in the staff report.
Yeah, it does.
Which page?
I think if you look on page three or four.
Second paragraph.
Yeah, it's near the bottom, under the table of that paragraph.
Okay.
Additionally, I would add that the use of these consultants, even for items under $30,000, is usually budgeted for either within a project budget, a CIP project budget, or some other part of our professional services budget. It may be testing that we do on wells, or something like that, and so we use that company. But because it's annual testing, we budget for it within the professional services budget of the affected department. So it's not as though the city manager would indiscriminately, at least the city manager, indiscriminately go out awarding task orders. We hold true to the budget as established by the city council, both for items under 30,000 as well as over 30,000.
Okay. Well, thanks for clarifying that. Like I said, I just was trying to grasp the, really to understand it, why, you know, not that we've done this before, you said that. I'm just trying to understand and educate myself on why we just, you know, 21 consultants is a large number, and I think as that number grows, like with our other list, that we have our master list that we have, that we approved a while back, is that we just continually seem to be just kind of greenlighting things without approval. So I just want, the council to be cognizant of that. I don't, nothing jumps out as a red flag to me. I understand it's this common thing, and I'm sure that the council probably will support it, but I just wanted to bring those thoughts out.
Yeah, and maybe just as, you know, for edification, too, if we didn't have this, what we would typically do for anything under 30,000, we would typically have to go get three bids, competitive bids, and then do it. So it saves some of that legwork, too.
And cost.
Items and costs that are associated with that, yes.
And also, in the fiscal analysis, it says it has, does not right now have a direct fiscal impact, so.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mayor. Basically, there's no guaranteed level of work in any of these, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you, Mike.
Sure. Anybody else? Before we, okay. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute multi-year on-call master task order agreements for on-call consultant services with, should I read it from yours?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Interwest Consulting, Wood Rogers Incorporated, Next Gen Utility Management, EKI Environment and Water, Blackwater Consulting Engineers, SOMAS, GHD, John Wooton, Intergation, West Yost Associates, Carroll Engineers, Coastland Civil Engineering, Bennett Engineering Services, KSN Incorporated, Construction Testing Services, Wallace Cole and Associates, Moniz Architecture, GRA Architecture, REY Engineers Incorporated, MC Engineering Incorporated, and IB Consulting, LLC. Can I get a motion?
And authorize.
Oh, and authorizing public works director to extend the master task order agreement for up to two one-year extensions.
Moved.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Do a second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. And we have another pulled one, authorizing to purchase a telehandler for an amount not to exceed $60,000. And it has nothing to do with telephones.
So I pulled this item again, and Mike, we talked about this as well, but only because this is an expenditure, and I feel like we're in this budget thing, I just wanted to clarify to the public what this is about, for those that don't read the stuff online. So this piece of equipment, you guys rent a lot. You find yourself renting this piece of equipment, and we don't have our own.
That's my understanding. Yeah, we do not have our own, and we do have need to rent a piece of equipment on occasion. The other thing, too, is it would also cover us in case of an emergency, that we would, you know, need to change a pump out, or something like that, so.
So my understanding is that recently, you guys found this piece of equipment, which would normally cost like $180,000 or something. You found one used in good condition for $60,000, but because of the process of going to the council and asking for the money, whatever, it was sold before you had a chance. So what we're doing with this is pre-authorizing up to that expenditure, should something come up to buy, and you guys can then go out to public auction, or wherever, and have a little more leeway on looking for something, right?
Correct, correct, yeah. Essentially, what we're asking the council for is authorization up to $60,000 to go find a used, one of these telehandlers. It's basically a forklift that can be extended, you know, at heights kind of thing. So it would help us to work, do work on roofs for the city's facilities, as well as at the treatment plant, and water wells, and the like, so.
So was this budgeted, I didn't, I looked back in the 17, 18 budget, but I think I might have read it wrong. Was this something that was budgeted before in the capital outlay, but then it didn't get used?
Yes. My understanding is, and I think Mr. Clarkson's here, too, he may be able to add something. But my understanding is, is there was $60,000 budgeted previously, and they went out for bids, and the new pieces of equipment were coming in at 180, so it's far in excess of our budget. So then staff started exploring the used market, equipment market, and I think they identified at least once and maybe twice a piece of equipment that they wanted to purchase. However, because either the private party who was selling it, or the auction or whatnot, would not hold it until we could get council approval, so we missed out on a couple of opportunities. And then that year, you know, expired, and along with it, the appropriation. So that's why we're essentially asking, again, for an appropriation, and that way, we're ready to go once we find the next piece of equipment that, you know, meets our criteria.
Okay. And just the last clarification, just again, because of, so I just want to clarify to the public that this expenditure comes out of our '05, '07 water funds.
Correct, yeah.
Not '01 general fund, which is the fund we're...
Correct, yeah. There is no general fund money on this. This is basically split, I think it's roughly $20,000 for the '05 water fund, and $40,000 for the '07 wastewater fund.
Okay. That's all I had, Mike, thanks.
Mike, I have a question on that. Do you, $60,000, how you come up with that amount?
So my understanding is, from the couple of failed attempts from staff in the past to procure one, was that that is about the cost max that we would see for the type of piece of equipment that we would need. These things can vary significantly, so, but the one that would serve our needs, essentially, in the used market, you know, we don't want to get one that's too old, or has been, you know, you know, essentially, got a lot of hours on it kind of thing. But, so that's, and in talking with private parties, auction houses, and seeing, you know, what some of these things are selling for, that's how staff determined this amount.
So that's me. You guys already have a research. You guys already have a research, uh, that kind of price very much going to the auction, it could be some equipment, right?
Correct, yes.
Uh, the other thing is this kind of equipment, how often you guys use it last year?
So I will defer to Mr. Clarkson, maybe he can, uh, give you some more detail on that.
Mayor, council. Um, to answer the question, we've, if we had it in our stable right now, we would be utilizing it two or three times a week. Uh, what we do is we have to work with contractors that we have pumps to be delivered somewhere. We have to work with them, so they bring a forklift or something to get it off their trucks, because we don't have anything like that at utilities. Or we have them deliver over there at the, at the yard. And so we have to do these double, uh, you know, trips back and forth. We have, we have to do a lot of organizing. We also have, um, uh, pumps and equipment that have to go into places where water is, that right now it's, um, we're doing it with, uh, with come-alongs and a few other things, because we can't reach it. We can't reach where we need to go with the cranes that we have. So, so this would be utilized at least two to three times a week.
So, so, so that's mean, this piece of equipment, it can help to reduce the cost of the contractor, right?
Yes.
Or if you're using the contractor, they're using their own equipment, they're usually contracted higher than normal, right? So this equipment is, can save some money, right?
Yeah, that, that's what the intent is, is that this is going to save a lot of money, a lot of manpower's to, uh, have this on site.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just on Paul's comment, um, yeah, I did just kind of understand what it was, and I realized that's what they called that, you know, the telescopic forklift. But I just, for kicks, I just went on the internet and looked around and, and yeah, it's like the going price, it's like forty to eighty thousand. That's the range, so sixty's right in there and depending on the year and all that. But, so, um, yeah, and so I just want to say kudos to you guys, because I mean, obviously you could be here asking us for the hundred and eighty thousand to buy a new one. And, you know, the water funds probably could afford that possibly, but I, I commend you guys for looking at alternative or looking for a good used piece of equipment, it does save some money, and so thank you for doing that.
Goodness, the staff.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order for a telehandler in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars and authorizing an appropriation of sixty thousand dollars to purchase the used piece of equipment?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Farmer and seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Do we have any scheduled matters?
None.
In the regular calendar, we have the Community Development Department, Senate Bill Number Two, Planning Grant, Mr. Arias.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Chris Arias, Community Development Director, again, I think we got a presentation coming up. Um, but this item before you is a request to submit an SB two planning grant. Uh, the action is to prove, uh, to approve our submittal only. Any activity proposed with the grant will require separate approval. A number of years ago, uh, the state approved a number of bills to help spur housing production. SB two is one of them. Uh, the goal of the SB two, the SB two program was to help cities and counties spur housing development. It provided a funding source for planning activities by charging a transaction fee through the State Department of Real Estate. So the SB two program goals are stated right there. Accelerate housing production, streamline the approval of housing development, and facilitate housing affordability. Eligible planning activities include updates to general plans, specific plans, zoning ordinances, and other similar documents that actually support the SB two goals. Eligible applicants are local cities and counties that have an HCD compliant housing element, a recent and actually current on their annual progress reports, and then demonstrate the nexus to, uh, accelerating housing production. SB two provided maximum grants to cities and counties based on population, and the city of Galt, uh, is eligible for up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars maximum. Uh, the good news is there, the grant is non-competitive and there's no matching requirement. So what we propose to use the funds for, you see in the bullet points. Uh, the first is to proactively amend the zoning code. Uh, the purpose of this proactive zoning rezone on some properties is to help make them more attractive for development. Uh, what we've been noticing, especially in infill development, is sometimes the zoning doesn't allow for, uh, the proper number of housing units to get revenue, and the expenses exceed revenue. So an example is, uh, we have a vacant lot at the corner of F and First Street. It's currently zoned commercial, it's about an acre in size. We've had proposals in the past to change that to high-density residential, but the cost and the time to do the entitlement has kind of chased, uh, housing away. So the thought is to go through a number of properties to see if we can put a higher and better use to it and then provide that, uh, zoning. The second one is kind of similar but different. Uh, it's to provide a cleanup to the zoning map. In twenty fifteen, the city did a comprehensive zoning update, which include, included really a new development code, but also a change to the zoning map. And as part of that, there's now an inconsistency between the high-density land use designation and also the zone. So for example, um, we have, uh, it's the Valley Oaks Apartments on Oak Street has a high-density land use designation, but the zoning is R-three, which is a medium-density designation. Another example of that is the Trail Ridge Apartments. They had the similar situation. And in order for them to do the expansion, they actually had to go through an, uh, rezone process. So the idea of this cleanup is to, uh, go and review all the high-density sites to make sure that the land uses and the zoning are consistent. The third bullet is similar. Uh, when we did our development code update, we basically changed the format, we changed a lot of items in the development code. And I get teased for carrying this book around, but this book, really, I've been logging a lot of the inconsistency that I find as I go through my normal working day. And there's a number of them. And an example is, in the R-three zone again, this is the one that seems to generate the most problems, they have a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. Well, if a development was to come in at five thousand square foot, uh, lot sizes, they wouldn't be able to meet the average eleven units per acre, uh, for the zone. So we have to look at that requirement and then adjust accordingly. And then there's a number of others, uh, in addition to that. So I'd like to mention though, that those two middle bullet points, I think the city has to engage in at some point. So it's either going to be at city's expense, uh, but I think we're fortunate that we have this grant available, uh, to help accomplish that, those tasks. So those three items will help spur development, uh, by putting higher and better uses to properties and cleaning up the development code, that can help, uh, streamline development. So we're confident that that would be an eligible activity for the grant. And then the last bullet there is to amend the general plan. If we're proactively changing zones, we have to amend the, the general plan to make sure there's consistency. So this map, or these two maps show, uh, some of the properties that we're looking at. Uh, and I included only the properties we're so far looking at, so you can kind of see them from a glance. We're not talking about new growth areas, we're talking strictly infill lots and, I don't know if you- So the, the C, or I should say, the first and F Street property is right there. That's a zoned commercial, it's only an acre in size. We're planning on changing it from commercial to high-density. So the left side shows the current zoning, uh, the right side would show the proposed. And right across, adjacent to this property across the street, uh, we have another cluster of, uh, parcels that I think are not appropriately rezoned. They're currently zoned R-one B, which is an eight thousand square foot lot minimum requirement. And we've had a number of builders come through and try to make development projects work at that, um, lot size. But based on, you know, frontage improvements and other development costs, they just couldn't get the revenue to make it work. So what we're proposing to do is change that to a medium density, an R-two, a fifty-five hundred square foot lot minimum, to help spur production. So that's an example of, uh, the proactive approach. And then Valley Oaks Apartments, right here, currently has an R-three zone, land, the land use is high-density. We have to clean it up and make sure that it's consistent with what's on the ground, fourteen to twenty-four units per acre, and then is consistent with the general plan land use. So our draft budget is shown on the screen. Um, you could see the bulk of the expense comes with the environmental study, and that's mostly from the traffic fees. When we're doing rezones and general plan amendments with land use, uh, we have to evaluate the traffic associated with it. So that's the largest expense that we would anticipate. And these costs reflect consultant preparation of these documents. So, uh, that concludes staff presentation. We're recommending that the council approve the resolution, um, giving us the authority to submit the SB two planning grant, and then also the authority to execute any documents related to the grant. And staff will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah, Chris, the first question is SB two, right?
Correct.
SB two, that can use only for?
For planning activities. So it's, it cannot be used for construction or any items like that. It's strictly for planning, uh, activities related to housing production. The state is getting serious about accelerating housing production, and we believe that with the actions we have, that we can, uh, achieve that in goal.
So that, that hundred and sixty, if we get that grant, uh, this, and on the staff report, you mentioned general plan amendment thirty thousand dollars. Can you break down something, how you end up with the thirty thousand?
Well, the thirty thousand again is a consultant cost, but that is the, uh, the fee for the consultant to do, um, the analyzing of the general plan, to go through it essentially and make the recommended changes. Uh, it's going to require, when we do, uh, general plan changes, we have to update maps and do an analysis on each of the properties. And that includes not only traffic, but from a planning activity. We have to go and make sure that it's consistent with the surrounding zones and the surrounding land uses. So it's not as easy as just changing, um, you know, the color on a map. We actually have to provide some analysis for it. And so the thirty thousand reflects really that analysis provided.
So that thirty thousand is also include the staff cost too?
No. So-
Just the-
No, that is just consultant cost. Uh, staff time associated with the grant is not an eligible activity to be reimbursed by the state. So, uh, I do expect, you know, staff time to be devoted to this program, but, uh, you know, our staff time is already accounted for in the standard, standard budget, and is no extra cost to the general fund.
So that's another, all the other cost, zoning, zoning tax amendment, this also on a consultant, no?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Chris, do you, um, do you anticipate that this will enhance the infill program that the council already approved, if we get the grant?
I do. And I think both of these activities, the infill incentive program that we created, coupled with, uh, providing better densities to help spur production, really shows good faith effort in the city to spur housing production, but also being strategic about where we're doing it. By prioritizing the infill, we're solving, you know, a lot of issues. I mean, we're taking care of a vacant lot that oftentimes are problems for the city. Uh, you're increasing revenue generated from these vacant lots, so there's so many good things to come from, uh, infill development. Uh, their services are nearby, of, most often, you know, you don't need to increase public services as part of it. So infill development has just been identified, you know, worldwide as a, you know, great planning activity.
Great, thank you.
I just have one question, Chris. Um, in, in the, uh, grant, are there monies, uh, to be able to put aside for reproduction of documents? I mean, I know when you do, you do general plan amendments and you get a series of them, um, are you going to be able to put a general plan together with, that is updated?
I, I want to say it's amended, not updated. I do expect, uh, the land use, uh, map to be amended.
Right.
Uh, there might be some, there might be some language in the land use portion that is amended.
Okay.
So to answer your question, yes, then we would be publishing those to every general plan that's sitting at a desk, every general plan that's hanging on the wall will have to be updated, and those costs are included in that grant.
Same with the development code.
Same with the development code. And you, you're correct, that, that is not, that is not an inexpensive task-
No, it's-
-or easy, as you know.
Thank you. That's all.
So Chris, that lot you mentioned, you were using as an example, is that, that's the northwest corner of, of New Hope and First, right there?
Yeah, next to the, um, I think-
Right across from the-
Care home. There's the care home right next to it, adjacent to the east.
Royal Oaks.
Right. Right. Okay, yeah. So, yeah, and thanks for meeting with me yesterday, um, and going and explaining this, because, you know, my initial research, if anybody goes and looks what SB two is, it can be kind of a scary thing, because there's a lot of words being used with, and, and one paragraph that really sums it up in the staff report is that, "To promote development consistent with, with, um, state planning priorities." And as we all know, that the state of California and what our legislators there would like to see from cities is not a, not always what I think what the people of Galt would want to see. Um, you know, there's a real big push to build more housing for people and, and, um, and so it can be scary. And when you have a, an item like this on the agenda that uses words like accelerated growth and, uh, you know, facilitate low-income households and things like that, it, those are, you know, um, words that can really, um, get people worked up, so. Um, but I do, you know, after talking with you and looking at this, I, I do understand that, um, that it's important that in the report, it mentions that there's certain things that we can do with the money that would show us kind of being compliant with what the state of California is asking us to do. And so what you're looking to do with this money would be to clean up, basically do some house cleaning with our municipal code-
Correct.
-and get some of these lots, which we've all, the council so far this year has been very good about, um, promoting infill development with some of the things we've passed. So we want to just further continuing that with getting some of these lots. I mean, that lot we just mentioned, that, that, that's been vacant, there's been nothing on that lot since I was a kid. I remember, you know, riding my bicycle through there. So it's, you know, those are lots that people are just not going to develop because of the constraints with-
Correct.
-the cost involved and not be able to do something. So if we can further promote people looking at doing that.
That is correct. I think the other, uh, way it helps us, we talked about this last meeting where we are getting the numbers for our housing element, our next cycle, cycle housing element. And the numbers are a little, I mean, I don't want to say they're frightening, but they are high for Galt. And I'm not, I'm confident that we can accommodate our housing production, uh, from a planning end, especially for the above moderate income category. But we are going to have to accommodate, uh, the, uh, lower income brackets, at least from a planning end, and we do that through density. So this program is going to help us create some lots that are going to help us meet that program. And it doesn't mean that we're setting these sites aside as, uh, deed-restricted, affordable. It's really they're affordable by their density. So our high density is fourteen to twenty-four units per acre, and that, from a planning end, helps meet the state requirement for lower-income households. So we, we are going to be on the hook, uh, in twenty twenty-two for, providing from a planning end anyway, uh, close to two thousand units, and almost, uh, over six hundred of those will be affordable in different categories.
Right, which leaves me in my next comment, which, you know, there was some, I think some misunderstanding. I, I had a lot of people emailing me and contacting me about this, and there were, there was, I think, a misunderstanding with, um, the lot size of the sixty-five hundred. I, I wanted to be clear that we're not talking about, um, reducing lot sizes for single-family dwellings right here. We're not, that's not what we're doing. We're talking about, we're primarily focusing on, um, you know, R-three, R-four type development, town, apartment, townhouse, high-density stuff, not, not creating little, because I know there's been some, some bad success with some small lot individual subdivisions that have kind of been not, and people aren't a fan of that. And so this is not what we're talking about here.
Well, for full disclosure, I do have some lots where I'm not changing land use, but, or I'm not recommending land use change, but am recommending a zoning change. Uh, for example, these parcels, uh, adjacent to the tracks, prime infill development, they're currently zoned for ten thousand square foot lots. Uh, I'm recommending that we, uh, downzone those to sixty-five hundred square foot.
And where is that at?
That is-
Cemetery.
Right south of downtown, off of G Street, off of Joy Drive.
Mm-hmm.
There are big vacant lots there, so I consider those infill lots, and probably not a good location for ten thousand square foot lots. I could see the ten thousand square foot lots more on the new growth areas and some of the annex areas. But in a downtown, you know, walking distance to, uh, most of the services in downtown, I would like to see a little bit better density. Uh, so without changing the land use, we were able to change, we're recommending a zone change from ten thousand square foot to sixty-five. But I believe that's the only other area. The other zone that we are recommending, uh, but does come with a land use change, is up in- that we are recommending, but does come with a land use change, is up in the northeast area, not the northeast specific plan area, but up along Carroll Drive and Ayers. There's a pocket of R one A 10,000-square-foot lot properties. We've had a number of people in trying to develop at 10,000 square feet, and they're just struggling pulling it together to make those work. What we're recommending is going to a medium-density zone, which is an R two, a 5,500-square-foot lot for single-family, 6,500 for duplexes. And what we see is, at least from an early glance, now these will all have to, we'll have to analyze all these to make sure it works for the city. But nearby, we already have R two zones. So right in between these properties, we have R two medium-density zones. So from, you know, a typical planning perspective, you would say that by providing that R two zone, it would be consistent and compatible with the surrounding properties.
So, yeah, so again, I just want to stress that there's a lot of people nervous about, you know, small, and again, I've never been, and you know this, to be candid, I'm not a big fan of sprawl growth. But I am a fan of infill growth, infilling, you know, the space that we have already. And I think that what the council's been doing so far, and I think this is just, this is what I call streamlining that a little bit more. So I just want to be clear that I don't view this as streamlining fast-accelerated sprawl. This is what I consider, you know, greenlighting and some hurdles that have been a challenge for infill development on lots that, like I say, I know that have been vacant for decades. So I think it's a good thing that we can get, we can focus on this infill stuff and focus on our inner core instead of just kind of going outwards. And at the same time, try to be compliant with some of the stuff that California is, you know, making us do. So I think that's it for my question. So thank you, Chris.
Anybody else? All right. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to submit a Senate Bill Number Two, SB two, Planning Grant application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and if the application is approved, authorize staff to execute a State of California standard agreement and any and all other documents required or deemed necessary or appropriate to secure the SB two planning grant.
Can I make one last comment for him, make the motion? I forgot, sorry. So any, this is just for the things you highlighted. We're not, we're not approving any such, anything growth or any building, whatever, just...
No, and then...
Just for the public to understand.
Right. And then, as I stated at the beginning, you know, it's just for submitting for the grant. The planning activity related to it will have to come back to you for approval at a notice public hearing.
I just want to, out to the public. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Everything passes four zero tonight. All right. Any communication?
Nothing.
Okay. Anything to report?
No.
Okay. Comments by staff? Ms. Claire, you've been awfully quiet tonight.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Mr. Selling?
Yeah, I wanted to note that the recent construction out at the intersection of Elk Hills and Walnut has recently been completed, and the four-way stop is in and functional. So I want to make sure everybody is aware and make sure you stop at Walnut now. So the other thing I also wanted to in turn acknowledge and thank, Ms. Bonnie Rodriguez, on the visits that we did. That was initiated by the state, by Cal Recycle. They periodically like to come and visit, make some visits to some of the businesses. And I think, you know, obviously with what's been going on as far as the recent, you know, rate increase, it was, it was definitely a good time, timing for them to come down and hear firsthand, you know, what some of the businesses are experiencing. So Bonnie coordinated that, and so I really appreciated her, you know, reaching out to the chamber members and getting that set up. So, thank you.
Do you know if there's going to be a do not go through this area right in front of the fire department? Have they done that? Are they not doing that?
No, it should be open, is my understanding.
Okay. Usually in front of fire departments, there's like, don't stop or don't block.
Oh, I see what you're saying, on the pavement legend. Yeah, I can verify that.
Okay.
Typically, you know, where they exit from their bays, that there's usually a, you know, a zone to keep clear. So...
Someone told me today, but I haven't driven by, so I'll go, I'll go look too. Mr. Arias?
Real quick, I'd just like to thank Barbara Payne and Keith Jones for providing the reports for the Beautification Committee and Planning Commission. It's been a pleasure working with both, and I'm especially glad to have the Beautification Committee coming in and working with the Community Development Department. It's been, it's been a lot of fun.
Lieutenant Kalanowski, what's coming up?
The chief said less is better, so I don't have anything tonight.
But he doesn't live by that.
I know. So today is your birthday gift.
Thank you. All right. City manager, Mr. Hagman, anything?
Yes, I want to remind the council and the community of our meeting scheduled for August 27th. That's next Tuesday at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. We'll continue our meeting on the city's financial sustainability plan, and we will be reviewing recommended expenditure reductions. Remember that our plan is really a three-phase plan, short-term expenditure reductions that we can take immediately or unilaterally to bring our budget into balance. And then looking at midterm and long-term efforts. Midterm and long-term efforts usually require more time, are not unilateral determinations that we can simply make, and thus they do require some more time. But we'll review all three of those phases of our financial sustainability plan, as well as the more immediate cost reductions that I'll be recommending to the city council. Then on September 3rd, at your regular meeting, it is planned that you would consider enactment of those recommended cost reductions. So next Tuesday, 6:00 PM here in the council chambers, a review of all that, followed by on September 3rd, your regular meeting, again at 6:00 PM, in which you would be considering those items. And then finally, with respect to our trash hauling rates, especially for commercial businesses, we do continue to work with cow waste. We have a number of activities underway right now with cow waste, exploring whether or not we can achieve a measure of rate relief for the commercial customers. These activities do take and are taking a little bit of time, but they are nonetheless activities we want to pursue to the end. So that work does continue. Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned the special meeting, budget meeting, next Thursday?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Would it be possible to get that on the city website under city meetings, when you click on city meetings?
Sure, I imagine. Yeah, we'll do that.
Because it's not on there, because those are important. Okay, not, I'm not just talking about the agenda. I'm just like talking about having it on the schedule.
Yes.
Sure, whoa.
We will do that.
Okay. Thank you. And then Ms. Attorney, Ms. Steiner, do you have anything?
I do not. It's been a pleasure to be here this evening. I think I forgot to turn on my clock yet.
Well, you're going to have to tell Kimberly what time the meeting adjourned. She's going to be a little jealous, I think. All right, Councilmember Campion, anything? Okay. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Yeah, I would like to thank you for public comment. The people come over there to the podium. I really appreciate my responsibility and the way I lectured. I like to listen and make a decision, whatever public said. And I really, again, thank you for whoever come to the public. And I like to encourage everybody come to the meeting and bring your issue, bring your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Farmer, for those comments. I just want to say that I went to the Blume Festival, too. My family and I volunteered out there both days, and it was a good event. It was lots of fun. And so people that missed it, encourage you to come again if we have it again next year. And also regarding the budget meeting, I encourage people to come to that next Tuesday and also the September 3rd. We want input from the community. We want people to come and become educated on what's going on, so they know, you know, what we're trying to do up here. And there's a lot of misinformation floating around. So it's important that people come and listen and see those decisions and give input on those decisions, because, you know, ultimately we want to do what's best for the community, and we want to hear from the public and let us know your feelings on things. So I encourage people to try to make that if they can. Last thing is, we have our Galt Sesko Centennial coming up. I'm going to start plugging this as much as I can. You know, we have a great event planned for September 14th. There's been a lot of moving parts. The chamber and other organizations have been fundraising to make this happen. So all the funding is coming from private sponsorships and donations. We have just a plethora of things planned for that day. You can go to galt150.com and see all the events that are scheduled that day. We're going to have some dignitaries there for a ceremony. We're going to have sorts of cool things for the family, for kids. And we still are looking for volunteers, so if anybody's interested, you can reach us through that website. And so I just want to say, make sure you come out September 14th, celebrate Galt's 150th birthday. So should be great.
So Sean, I heard you were working on costumes for all the department heads so that they can attend. Is that...
Well, the chief's supposed to dress up, so he's just raising the bar for y'all. Yeah. So, but yeah, we are encouraging people to come period dress. We have a lot of people and a lot of our participants in our entertainment that are going to come in period dress. We're trying to, we're trying to, the event is basically to convert Old Town Galt into like late 1800s to 1930s in that era. So everything we have, entertainment, festivities, music, everything is based in that, in that theme. So it's going to be really neat, and I think it's going to be awesome. So if people want to come out, we actually have a contest for people that dress up, you know, can win something best dressed. So we do.
The terror in their eyes. And I think the Transcontinental Railroad is also celebrating a Sesko Centennial that year, too.
Golden Spike, yeah.
All right. So I would like to encourage everyone, the Galt community, when they voted last, approved Measure K, and the Galt High Football Stadium will be, the football team will be playing their first game there this Friday. So they'll have some festivities at 6:30 and kickoff at 7:00. If you want to come check out, the Galt High finally has a redone stadium, and it's beautiful. So I think that's it, and meeting adjourned.